maintains a fleet of four airships, three in the United States and one in Europe.
While the new fleet is made up of semi-rigid airships which have an internal frame, Goodyear continues to refer to them as blimps.
The Goodyear Blimp has also made history. In 1930, they became the first blimp to carry a lighted sign. In 1967, the Goodyear Blimp Columbia provided live television coverage for the first Super Bowl. And in 1989, during the World Series in San Francisco, a massive earthquake hit. And footage from the blimp provided crucial aerial views of the damage for relief efforts.
And proving that not all celebrities are people. In January 2019, the Goodyear Blimp became the first non-human inductee into the College Football Hall of Fame. You all have been doing some great work.
But there are a few more types of advertising that we need to brush up on before your final project.
In the collection of the National Air and Space Museum, we have a huge assortment of airline posters.
Your next job is to take these airline posters and match them up with the type of advertising they depict.
Remember that advertising is trying to get you to do or buy something.
Have at it.
It's only logical. When you see this ad, look at all of the important things this airline has on every flight. They have two pilots and two-way radios. It's an appeal to logic. These features make this airline the logical choice.
Scientific appeal. Wow, look at how complicated that cockpit is. It must be cutting-edge technology, which is a scientific appeal. Showing that use of innovation, science, and technology makes their service better.
Snob appeal. We all want to fly first class. This is an example of snob appeal. Showing everyone they can fly in luxury if they use this airline.
Appeal to emotion. Doesn't everyone love kids and puppies? This can be one of the most persuasive forms of advertising.
You all did awesome work. But did you know that products sometimes get into advertising battles to see which one reigns supreme?
And in the 1980s, it was the cola wars.
Two popular brands of soda kept trying to outdo each other with the best ads to get you to drink their product.
And the cola wars even went into space.
Here's a blast from the past, an interview Beth did on the very first episode of Stem and 30. Take out your devices and check it out.
I'm here today with curator Valerie Neal, and we're taking a look at some space food. And Valerie, I'm curious, how did we get these very strange-looking soft-drink cans in our collection?
Well, Coca-Cola and Pepsi approached NASA about flying soft drinks in space in an early shuttle mission in the early 1980s. This was a time known as the cola wars, when Coke and Pepsi were very competitive with each other, each wanting to be the number-one soft-drink provider in the world. And what could be cooler than to be the first soft drink in space?
So why soft drinks?
Well, they thought that maybe the crews would like to have a greater variety in their beverage selection. Astronauts had always been accustomed to powdered drinks, and they thought that maybe they'd like to have a good all-American soft drink while they were in space. But there are problems with that.
Yeah, I can see they've got these bizarre tops on them.
Exactly. If you were to pop the top of a soft-drink can in space, it would spew everywhere and make a big mess. Or even if you twisted the cap, it would float out of the bottle. So the companies put some time and effort into devising a special soft-drink can for use in weightlessness. And Coke developed a device on top that you would actually put in your mouth and push the button, and it would squirt the soft drink into your mouth. And then Pepsi did an adaptation of a standard shaving cream can or a whipped cream can, where again, you would put the little spigot on top right into your mouth and drink that way. And just as shaving cream and whipped cream come out pretty foamy, so did Pepsi. And so did Coke, for that matter. The crews were not really impressed with the taste or the mix of carbonation and syrup.
And is it in there just the way an ordinary Coke can or Pepsi can is?
No, there's actually structure inside the can to keep the carbonation and the syrup separate, so that they would mix at the point of drinking. And they tried different combinations, and they never got the taste quite right or the consistency quite right.
Well, how do you keep an ice-cold soft drink in space?
Well, that was also part of the problem. There's no refrigerator on the space shuttle, and so they had to drink at room temperature. And who likes to drink a warm soft drink?
Not me.
Not the astronauts.
Well, thank you very much. It's very interesting history on cola wars in space.
We have covered a lot of different advertising strategies today.
And now it is your turn. We want you to go out and produce the most amazing ad we've ever seen.
Well, get going.
We think we've created the greatest ad of all time.
We took all the information and created this.
We think you'll like it.
We live in a digital world.
Screens are everywhere. Anyone can create media.
Including us.
Like this ad.
There's a world of information, good and bad, at our fingertips.
How do we know what to believe?
How do we know what's true and what's fake news?
It starts with us.
Us?
Yes, us.
It starts with you.
We all have to be good media consumers.
Stop and think.
Stop and think.
Stop and think.
Stop and think.
Which messages make sense and which ones require more research?
Stop and think. The power is with you to be a good media consumer.
Before you share information, you should always stop and think.
Before you share social media posts, you should always stop and think.
It's up to you to make sure you don't get fooled.
Hoodwinked.
Tricked.
Loved.
Con.
Coke.
Used.
Exploited.
Flimflam. Only you can control how you interact with and understand the messages that you see and hear every day.
Stop and think.
Great job, everyone.
If you only take one thing away from today's episode, it's to be a good media consumer. And knowing how advertisers try to reach you is a great first step.
What was your favorite part of the episode?
If you liked this episode, be sure to follow Stem and 30 on Facebook.
And Twitter. And subscribe to the National Air and Space Museum's YouTube channel.
Thanks for watching.
Okay, what do you know?
Nothing.
I do, I do.
Bryce and Ellie, why don't you guys go out and connect with a skywriter? You're supposed to go. Okay.
Tell us about practice on ground. It says on ground.
Screens are everywhere.
Okay.
That's the best I've ever jump roped.
Hello, I'm Kayla. I'm a student here at Bay Path University. I'm here with my peers Molly, Elena, and Laura to discuss an issue that we feel must be talked about on campus.
And that issue is bullying, even in adulthood. Many people think that the second we leave high school, that issue kind of goes away, but it still takes place in our society even at our age.
An adult bully is someone who tries to make you feel oppressed, belittled, and humiliated. They do this by personally insulting others, publicly shaming them, invading their personal space, or telling ridiculous jokes.
That's right, Laura. According to a survey, around 31% of adults have felt that they have been bullied. And in another study, 10 to 15% have experienced cyberbullying. Bullying can result in anxiety, depression, and loss of confidence and sleep.
But in college, especially for residential students, you don't have as much of that support anymore since you're so far from home. It's hard to escape a bully when they are in one of your classes or even your roommate.
We're also young, and we're entering a new chapter of our lives. We should be networking. We should be making friends. Hey Molly, do you have any advice for adults who are experiencing verbal harassment at their age?
Of course. And if you are a victim of bullying, do your best to pick and choose your battles. If you choose to address the bully, directly make eye contact and speak your mind. But if you decide to walk away, that doesn't make you less than or a coward for removing yourself from a bad situation.
Sometimes it takes more courage to walk away than stay and argue with a person who may not see reason. It also takes a lot of courage to step in when you see someone being bullied. If you see something, question the bully to shift the focus of the conversation, or maybe tell a joke to distract. Those are some good methods to try, Kayla, but what if someone watching this video just realized that they are an adult bully?
That's a great question, Laura. At the end of the day, bullies are people too, but their behavior is not okay. If you have just realized that you've been a perpetrator in a bullying incident, you may want to look into some emotional support through friends, family, and even therapy.
Thankfully, we have mental health resources available here at Bay Path University through our counseling centers. You can call or email them anytime. Their information will be shown at the end of this segment.
I'm glad that Bay Path is able to provide such a great resource. It was great discussing this topic with all of you. Thanks for watching, Bay Path. Let's keep our campus safe and sound.
Well, no, 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 I parked here. Can I walk down? Just give us 10 seconds, please. Yep, thanks.
Standby. And five, four, three, two, one.
All right, welcome everybody to the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Longmeadow Select Board. This is Select Board Vice Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwarko.
Yes.
Beneath Hamavethi.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Longmeadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q&amp;A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hands when we get to the comment section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting being Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Okay. Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for announcements, annual town election is set for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at the Longmeadow Community House. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The voter registration deadline, if you are not already a registered voter in town, is June 3rd, 2024. To view a sample ballot and find more information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. Cooley Brook Survey. If you missed the three-day Cooley Brook event series, the town will still like to hear from you regarding the conceptual design for restoring the Brook at Bliss and Laurel Parks. Please take the 10-question survey linked at longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts to view the design renderings and give your feedback. Long Range Plan Public Forum. Join the town for the final Long Range Plan Virtual Public Forum at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, to learn about the plan's findings and recommendations. This is an opportunity to view a short presentation and then join in on a Q&amp;A and discussion regarding the planning process and outcomes. Additional information and Zoom webinar information can be found at longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Memorial Day. Reminder, town of Longmeadow Municipal offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th, 2024, for Memorial Day. Please join us for a Memorial Day service on the Town Green at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, the 27th. All right, we'll go right into resident comments.
No one on Zoom.
Okay. I'm going to Select Board comments. First off, since I think since our last meeting, the Middle School Building Committee met and further narrowed down the possibilities, so that it's down to three, which is a new school at Williams, a renovation and addition at Williams, and a code update at Glenbrook. There was a lot of good information at the last meeting, and there was an article in the reminder's doing pretty good coverage of it. So if anybody's interested in that, I encourage them to check it out. I'd like to recognize or congratulate Beneath on being recognized for AAPI Month by Mass Live. There's a great article on you. Congratulations on that. And finally, last week, we had a great, smooth, and pretty short town meeting. I want to thank Rebecca Townsend and Larry Starr for helping us out there. I got a few questions. They may have been facetious, but why we don't do large consent agendas on our end right off the bat. And I want people to hear what they're voting on. And at least for some larger items, like I remember there was a proposed consent agenda last year, maybe, I think it was last year, about the $9 million L project. And a couple of us held it, I think, because you got to hear those things. But if people are comfortable with it, it can make things smooth, so it's how it went. So I just wanted to address that, and if anybody's curious about it. That's it for me. Anybody else? Mark?
Oh, just a quick one, yeah. Thank you, Josh, for saying that. I appreciate that. I, last week, attended the Massachusetts Legislative Broadband Summit. And so this was the first time that this has been held, and this was to bring together leaders, both in the private industry and municipal space, and talk about, you know, how broadband is developing in Massachusetts and fiber internet, and also some of the legislative asks that the industry leaders have of, you know, of our state house. And this is a great event. I attended as well as some members of the Municipal Fiber Task Force. It was just really great to talk to the folks and see how they're doing things and to just gather more information as we continue on this process of making recommendation to the Select Board and to the town about fiber internet moving forward.
Go ahead, Mark. Yeah, I was just in Beneath, there was an article in The Republican last week, I think, the other day, about pending legislation that would simplify the... Is that something that we should be concerned or could impact us, or?
So that was actually the main topic of this, and I think that's probably why the article's written. The summit was held just over at AIC. And so, yeah, it's called One Touch Make Ready. And so in Massachusetts right now, with poll applications, it can take two to three years for poll applications to go through and for, you know, work to actually begin to put up fiber lines. Most other states in New England have this one-touch-make-ready process, and that only takes a couple of months for it to go through. So there are folks kind of in the private industry, of course, that are kind of pushing that. It's kind of unclear exactly who it would favor or help, but something that, yeah, we're tracking, and yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, a couple of other things. I attended the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust, and just for the Select Board to understand, the issue came up of Westcom. Westcom, over here remembers, but when Westcom was formed, there were just a couple of employees, and in order to give them medical benefits, they went in under the sponsorship of Longmeadow. There've been, obviously, Westcom's grown, and there's been some concerns, and there's been discussion of how do we separate them from Westcom? It's not a big deal. I think we've come to an approach that will do that. I think there's some people who are concerned about equity and new organizations coming into Scannick Valley, but I think this can all be resolved without that. I only bring it up so that people understand it was an issue. It may continue to be an issue, but I think it's being resolved. The only other thing I want to comment on, and this is just to get something on the record that once again today, you know, Waste Management did not complete their route. At least there's nothing on the town website that says they weren't going to be able to complete their route. So I don't know if they didn't call in or they called in late or something like that, but it's kind of been an ongoing issue. And next week is a pre-meeting on our 2026 and beyond trash hauling contract, so. What is the process supposed to happen now? I don't even remember. They are supposed to, when they realize they can't complete the route, they're supposed to call the DPW, Lisa Oxen, and I believe, and have it get posted on the town website. It's not posted, but Lisa leaves at 4:30 or 4 o'clock or something. I don't know.
I'm seeing it here, that 3:39, they said they might not finish. And then at 6:04, they said not finishing.
Oh, okay.
Four streets.
Oh, so that it was on our website now, or?
No.
Oh.
The email just came. I just saw now that you're mentioning it.
It's just a, you know, it's just annoyance that people leave their trash out all night. Well, and even then, because they still have to go check, right? It doesn't get pushed out. We have no way to push it out to those residents, that information.
Not specifically, but I would encourage if we do get the updates in a reasonable time during the day, we can push it out via the app. So I just encourage everyone to download the app, and everyone will get that notification no matter what. But if it's something that, like Lynn mentioned, we receive at the end of the day, it's tough to manage that.
And then the contract does call for them to finish Monday before they start Tuesday. See how that works. Anybody else? Oh, and a few of us went to the library volunteer brunch today, brunching, I guess, which is a nice event. I just wanted to, there's a lot of great volunteers over there. I'm glad they were recognized in the library. It was a nice event. And still had some decorations from the high tea they served yesterday. So a lot of good stuff going on over there. If there's nothing else, we'll go to town manager's report.
Thank you. So at our May 6 meeting, I talked about the idea of a formal FY25 goal-setting retreat. One of the facilitators I've spoken with is John Wortman. He has extensive experience working with Massachusetts municipalities on this topic. I did send you all some information over the weekend, just with links to what he's done and the type of work he provides. So at some point, I'd like to have a conversation about whether you're interested in pursuing this or some other version of goal-setting. Regarding state budget amendments, so Representative Ash had put one in for the chiller at Wolf Swamp, and unfortunately, it did not make it through the House budget amendment. However, I did submit another budget item to Senator Olivera's office, and this was for Glenbrook Field for regrading and clay. That is still in as of now, but the debate is scheduled for the 21st through the 24th this week. So we'll see if it can live through that process. Bliss Pool Work, a contract was just signed with JL Raymakers and Sons for a prize not to exceed $276,300. This is for the electrical and mechanical work. Project's been broken into two phases with the preliminary substantial completion date being June 1st, and then the final substantial completion date being November 9th. This is due to the long lead time for the electrical panel. DPW is working with JL Raymakers to develop a temporary plan to be able to open the pool. AE Comm is in the process of designing the ADA accessibility and liner work. That's going to be the final phase of this project. And as of now, we still have enough money to get all of this work done. A contract was just signed for installation of a water tank mixer in the amount of $92,307. This is the result of design work related to water enhancements to improve water quality. This was funded at the annual town meeting in May of 2022. And Cooley Brook Design Work, some of you also took part in this, but approximately 25 people attended the Walk and Talk Event on Sunday, May 5th. Quite a few people came through the open house Monday night, the 6th, and talked with the designers. And Tuesday's presentation saw about a dozen residents, along with staff, Select Board members, and board and committee members. For those that are interested, there's a copy of the presentation available on the Cooley Brook Project website. And residents are encouraged to take the survey. That's still available, linked here in my report, but also available on the website as well. An Ironman race is going to briefly touch in Longmeadow on June 9th, just to give people a heads up that a section of the race is going to enter Longmeadow on Converse Street. They're going to come out Porter Lake Drive up Converse, then onto Park Drive and skirt the park, and then enter back into the park. And there were recently tree removal hearings for many trees along Longmeadow Street and then on Pleasant View Avenue. There were 46 public shade tree removal hearings of those. There were nine objections filed for these trees, some on Longmeadow Street and some on Pleasant View. The tree wardens reviewing the locations where objections were received and will make a decision regarding filing an appeal pursuant to MGL Chapter 87, Section 4, which would then trigger it coming to the Select Board. An RFP is out to hire for assessing services. The due date for responses is May 24th. And attached in my report is the quarterly legal expense update. As you'll see and hear, the one to know is the jump with the DPW case. For all of the fiscal year, we had not received any bills yet. And as we're looking to close out FY24, we reached out and inquired on that, and they had changed their billing software and had not invoiced us since July. So that's why you see a large jump of $0 to $140,000. That covers all of FY25... 24, I'm sorry. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
I just had a quick question. I don't know if you know, as Mary Mark knows it, on the chart showing the sewer and the water and the rainfall, I assume that we just started this last year in December, since there was no rain, no? Oh, we've been doing that for, there was a gap, but we've been getting that chart for years. Oh, I don't know. I've never seen the rainfall before. Okay. And where's that?
Where's that? Oh, never mind, okay.
It just shows that there's a lot of infusion into our sewer system from...
Right.
Whether it's gutters that go into this sanitary sewer system, or connections, or broken pipes, or whatever it is. It's pretty substantial.
Mm-hmm. Lynn, how's our lifeguard staff looking?
We are fully staffed, and I don't want to say that out loud.
Not what I expected to hear. So, what does "fully staffed" mean this year? Is that...
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I know we've filled the positions.
All right, I should say, is that five days at each pool, or is that?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Once we get to the full summer season, once school's out.
All right. That's good.
There's a lot of pieces that need to still fall into place over the next month.
All right. I'm glad to hear that, and I don't know if it was the training, or the dropping down to 15, or whatever it was, but I'm glad you all did. It's a good job. Go ahead, Vene.
So, I just wanted to highlight something from the DPW report, just of public interest. In the DPW report, it does say that the ADA playground equipment has been delivered and is ready to be installed at the end of the school year. And also, it's great in the DPW report to see all the contracts being awarded for paving, water mains, and also, they note in the report that schedules will be announced soon, so folks will be made aware. And then, in the Finance Department's report, I was also happy to see that, Ian, you'd put in there that you were going to be evaluating the Select Board financial policies. I think that's, you know, it's almost like when it comes up, then we're like, "Oh, man, we should have looked at this before." So, it's good to kind of get ahead of this and be looking at all of it and revisiting it to make sure that these policies still make sense for where we're at today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else? We'll move on to the approval of the April 16, 2024, meeting minutes.
I think we just got them. You know, I haven't had a chance to look at them. I don't know if anybody else has.
It was a short one.
Yeah, I'd be...
I read it, but I wasn't here. So, no, no, I wasn't here.
And you went to abstain anyway, and I'm going to abstain because I didn't read it.
Oh, well, there you go. So, we'll wait till next time. Gentlemen. All right, so the LCTV operating agreement, we are, I recommend we don't take any action on it tonight. We, it was put on the agenda because we had an agreement in place, and then Mark asked a good question when the review came out. And then Lynn and I have been working with our council on making some other changes, and I think we're very close, but I just, we're not going to take any action tonight. Then on to the Energy and Sustainability Committee, Municipal Aggregation Recommendation. Anybody wants to come up? Come speak. Please just introduce yourself, name and address.
Brian Miller, 91 Meadwood.
Doug Taylor, Northfield Road.
So, Andrea Chason, 236 Crestrooster. Oops, wait a second. Crestrooster, sorry. Brian, introduce yourself.
I did.
Okay, so, delighted to be here. Thank you. And both Doug and Brian are valuable members of the Energy and Sustainability Committee, and they're going to also help with the presentation. And I just wanted to do a little bit of background to talk about how we got to this process of making a recommendation to the Select Board as to a professional consultant for municipal aggregation. The municipal aggregation program in Massachusetts has been available since 1997, and the good news is that while it falls under the Department of Public Utilities for the state, as well as the Department of Energy Resources, they've put together quite a good best practices manual for how to go about putting together municipal aggregation program for municipality. And there are three distinct advantages that Longmeadow is looking to take advantage of, and we voted on this in November. The first is that, under municipal aggregation, the town becomes the buyer of the utility, in a sense, and is able to provide a stable amount of rates for the residents and the businesses for an extended period of time. And those times can range anywhere between one year to 30, to three years, depending on the current rate system. Right now, of course, you may be aware that every six months, the rates change for that we pay to Eversource, which is our utility company for electricity. So, the first benefit of this is a stable rate, and that's particularly important for people who have low income or are more vulnerable, and we have quite a number of residents on fixed incomes in this town. The second component, I mean, the other critical component that is really exciting for the Energy and Sustainability Committee is that, under municipal aggregation, we have a better chance of offering renewable energy to our residents and businesses through a tiered system of rates that individuals can opt into. And for us here at the Energy and Sustainability Committee, one of our components of our committee is that we really want to help the town reduce emissions and energy consumption in households. It's about 34% of all emissions, so we're really looking to create incentives for homeowners and residents and businesses to ultimately opt into more renewable sources of energy. So, those are some of the driving factors that got us to this, and so, just to go back in terms of how we're here now, I want to remind the Board that in November, at our November 7th Town Meeting in '23, the town voted to initiate the process of municipal aggregation and authorize the Select Board to choose a consultant for this project. And under best practices, what happens is that the town, in and of its own, doesn't have the expertise to go out and choose a consultant, and so they turn to a number of different companies that hold themselves out as professional consultants to help work with municipalities, to both put the plan together and offer it, and educate the community, and offer it up, and then help us make the selection as to which utility companies we're going to be using to provide the service. So, the Energy and Sustainability Committee was then asked by the town manager in December for assistance on this, and we again turned to the Department of Public Utilities to look at the best practices. And the first, one of the critical components is that this does not require an RFP. There's an exemption in the state law that allows a town or a municipality to select a professional consultant. And so, the end of 2023, about 167 municipalities throughout the state have actually adopted, or in the process of adopting, municipal aggregation plans. We turned to about 20 of them to see what those towns, who they use as professional consultants. This is narrowed down to about three who seem to dominate the field, and that was Mass Power, Good Energy, and Colonial Power. And in terms of looking again at what to, how to consider these companies, following, again, the Massachusetts Department of Utilities best practices, we turned to look at the criteria of length of time doing the work, demonstrated number of municipal clients, capability of outreach and education to the residents, continuity of relationships with clients, client satisfaction, knowledge of the industry. And we ultimately narrowed it down to the three that I just mentioned, Good Energy, Mass Power, and Colonial. Anything you guys want to add at this point? So, in making the final recommendation of Good Energy to the Select Board, myself, Gary Levine, and Mark Gold interviewed, well, Gary interviewed one, Mark and I interviewed all three, to ask them a series of questions that are also focused heavily on what their experience is. And we looked at a number of issues, and we came out with following types of questions. Their experience with the education outreach, we think that that's one of the most critical things for a community in general, because any time you make a change, we really focus heavily on making sure that the residents and the businesses understand what the change is, what its benefit is, and why we think it's appropriate. So, we really looked into their ability to provide necessary education outreach to community residents, how to help the community residents understand the opt-out process. The Mass Department of Public Utilities recommends that, when these are rolled out, that it is done as an opt-out for a resident, so they actually have to proactively contact the company to say, "I don't want to participate that. I want to continue using Eversource." And for the most part, every resident will be initially enrolled, from what we understand, in the basic service, which is a rate that's usually lower than what Eversource is charging per kilowatt hour. We wanted to know after the rollout, how many residents decide to opt out. That was a little harder to determine. How does the consultant handle the process of opting out for a resident? And they make it pretty easy, all of them do. And they also make it relatively understandable to how to opt in if you choose to do it at a later time. We wanted to know what their experience is with regard to procurement of utility companies to provide the electrical service, the length of time of contract period that they have chosen for communities, and how their rate tiers, and how they really work to educate the consumers on what the rate tiers are, and overall satisfaction with the... I should step aside for a second, because I got a little ahead of myself. These are the issues that we raised for references for every one of the consultants that we looked at. So, their experience with the consultant, the regard to education, the rollout going forward, their experience with procurement, length of time of contracts, and their satisfaction with the consultant. And so, in looking at all of these, I should point out that every company received pretty high marks. We had already narrowed it down to Good Energy and Mass Power, and we ultimately chose Good Energy for the primary reason that they helped develop the entire municipal aggregation program that is available in the state. Their model of how to go about doing it is used by all consultants. And I'd also like to point out that the town, in using any one of these consultants, would have very little to absolutely nothing to do, other than in terms of providing staff time, and we don't pay as a town any money. It all comes out of the ultimate bill from the rate payer. There's an administrative fee that's built into it, and even with that, there's still benefits, financial benefits to the residents. Any additional?
So, they offer three levels of pricing. So, the first level would be a percentage of renewable versus non-renewable energy. It's consistent with what Eversource provides today, but they provide it at a lower rate. The next level up is a higher mix of renewable, and then the top level, which you pay more for, is completely renewable. So, it's, in my mind, kind of an alternative to solar. So, if somebody doesn't want to cut down all their trees, using the highest level of municipal aggregation will help get the same effect.
And I feel one good aspect of this whole thing is that everybody's in this right from the beginning, so you don't have to worry about people signing up to become, to get on this plan. You know, everybody's on it, and then they get the choice whether they want to opt out afterwards. And they could start at any level and move around to any level that they want pretty freely.
Mark?
Yeah, I think, if I could, just point out a couple of things. One is that the role of the consultant, or that we choose, is to develop the contracts with energy suppliers, whether it's, you know, Constellation Energy, or whoever it may be. They do that for a living, something that the town wouldn't otherwise be able to do. Clearly, our purchasing department wouldn't know how to, you know, wouldn't be adept at that, and so they do that for a living, and they keep on top of all the potential suppliers and what their costs are, whether it's renewable, non-renewable. So, they really can, at the time that they go into it, provide us with the cost that they develop for how many kilowatt hours of electricity that are purchased, based on, as these gentlemen said, that whether you pick the current rate, which the state mandates a certain amount of renewables, but that's the base rate, something in between, or 100%. The other thing is that, I think the question a lot of people ask is, "So, how do these people make their money?" And the answer is, by legislation, these municipal aggregators make their money as, I believe, Andrea, it's .01 cent per kilowatt hour. .001 cent per kilowatt hour that the town purchases under this contract. And so, it's to their benefit to have more subscribers and have people not opt out. And so, it's a really good system. They, in fact, Good Energy has websites that you can go, each individual owner can go in and look at, there are all kinds of graphs and charts and stuff like that. They're very, very customer service-oriented. They put their customer service number on the energy, on the electric bills that people get, so it doesn't come to the town, doesn't go to the DPW. But the incentive is with the municipal aggregators to get more people to sign up for it. There's no cost or charge or problem with the town at all. We just hope that they do a good job and show the savings, what they have done. And, you know, I think the, anybody in the stock market will tell you, you know, past performance isn't an indicator of future projections, but they have these great charts that show, here's what Eversource has done over the last three years, and clearly, it's up every six months and down every six months, and up and down, because by law, Eversource must rebid their supply contract every six months. These guys say, "We can do it every two years, three years, whatever you want." And they show their straight line of costs, and, you know, overall, they've all shown historically that they beat the cost of Eversource. In fact, when there's a world crisis, like when Russia invaded Ukraine, and everybody's costs went up, I know towns like Redding were just laughing, because they were just sitting there at their pre-invasion costs for electricity.
I'd also like to add a couple of additional things that I didn't say, which is that this is the first, this is really like the third step in an eight-step process for municipal aggregation. So, choosing the professional consultant, who will then help put the whole package together and get the initial filing before the Department of Public Utility, help hold a public hearing for the community. But one of the things that, both Good Energy, Mass Power, all of them do, is a significant amount of education related to what we decide the community needs. And what Good Energy was able to do, and as is Mass Power, frankly, they would say, you know, "If you think we're not reaching a certain segment, you'll tell us how we can reach out and get to that segment of the population, how we best can do it. We can do it through mailings, we can do it through forums, we can do it through small meetings, through existing clubs." They all seem to be very knowledgeable about the best way of reaching the community. And our experience on energy and sustainability is getting the community to actually listen and hear what's going on is the hardest part. And so, of course, you don't want the community to have their first experience with any municipal aggregation, which is, "Oh, now I no longer have Eversource as my utility company. What do I do?" So, we really want to make sure that that process is well-explained, and that there's a customer service component that will allow anybody with questions to call and find specific answers to questions that they might have. One of the things that I liked about Good Energy is that they had quite a number of team members who seemed to be... who seemed to be able to immediately address any questions that we had and had, seems to have dealt with every issue that I could think of in terms of figuring out how they were going to help us get to every segment of the population in a way that will hopefully reduce the surprise or the shock of somebody saying, "I didn't know about that. How does that happen?" So, that was one of the, from my point, the strengths of the Good Energy and Mass Power also, but as I said, which has kind of tilted it a little bit over. And that's the recommendation. And again, I should also say, and this is down the line, because at some point, some group will have to help figure out which of the utility companies that are being presented to us should be the ones that we go with. The municipal aggregator also provides guidance in terms of length of time based on their knowledge of the market for signing contracts. So, there is right now a range of length of contracts that towns are signing, anywhere from one year to three years, depending on the rates that they're getting. And as we all know, there's tremendous volatility in the utility companies right now. So, they use their expertise to help say, "Well, you know, this is probably good for 18 months and then we should send it out for bid again." We don't send it out for bid, they do. Also built into the possibility, should it turn out to be some level of more onerous, more of a burden on the town administration, is the ability to build into any contract a .00001 cent of every, of the kilowatt hour to help fund an energy administrator for the town. Wouldn't be the total amount, but at some towns like East Hampton is using, is creating a model that's using that to help support some of the work that they're doing with the municipal aggregation.
So, a question about the process. For better or worse, Andrea and I were part of the group who got solar panels. I'm a net seller for the year. Is that, did that come up, or, you know, we're a small portion of the population, hope or more? That came up during the conversations, what that means for folks like me?
Essentially, has no impact for somebody like you, Josh, because you're a net seller. I mean...
But like, I sell at a certain rate. Does that, is it effective if we all have...
Your agreement's with EverSource, not with...
Okay.
So...
Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, well, you don't sell, I don't think you sell to EverSource either. You sell to another energy company, right?
My EverSource bill says sales. I don't know where it goes.
Okay. I have solar too, and I have another company I contact once a year. They give me a nice check.
No, I'm on the, it's smart, we won't get into it, but...
The answer is, this system addresses people with solar cells, people who have, already have third-party suppliers. They can be resolved, they can either keep what they got by opting out of this or change, because the state law gives them an opportunity to switch from their current third-party supplier into whoever Good Energy has identified.
Okay.
So, they've been doing this for 10, 12 years. They know, that's why we suggest somebody like this. The other thing is, I think Good Energy is Western Massachusetts-based, so they, that was another positive I saw when I saw this recommendation.
Yeah, so I want to thank you all for your work on this. I mean, this is a pretty significant undertaking in what is a pretty short period of time. So, I want to thank you all for everything that you've done in regards to this. And from reading the recommendation, from following your guys' work, I know that this was a very thorough process to end up where we are tonight with this recommendation. And so, I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to mention everything that happened in this process, because I believe that there was also another part of this process where the assistant town manager also, right, spoke to the consultants or evaluated it herself as well, right?
That's, Veneet, you're right. When the original round of interviews took place, we went back to Lynn and to Corinne Micey-Munz and said, "Maybe you want to talk to..." Because we actually saw it as, of the three we interviewed, we said, "This one's not quite the same. The other two are toss-up, it's up to you." And Corinne called them all, interviewed them all, and she said, "This one doesn't quite make it, these two are toss-up. Let's take it back to this committee and let that..." So, you're absolutely right. But she's pretty much agreed with the, can't go wrong.
Yeah, so, yes, it's great that...
I guess...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I'm reluctant to talk about, but, you know, certainly, my understanding from Corinne is that she spoke to both Good Energy and Mass Power. And she had conversations with them and then kind of pushed it over to us again to make the final recommendation. But I would much prefer to have her respond on that one.
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, but I mean, I just mean that there are other people also involved in this process, and I think that that should give folks even more, you know, confidence in how thorough this process was.
Again, everybody here is welcome. I can't imagine either of these aggregators not being willing to sit down and have a conversation with, at the mayor's select board. If you can find the time to do it in a timely way. Right now, DPU has about, they shortened the time. It used to be about 18 months to two years by the time, from the time a town got its application to the time approval happened. We're, this is a significant benefit to the residents in so many ways, and we're all struggling with this. So, do what you want to do. Certainly, this is, you make the decision. My question to you is how much further out this would go by adding ultimate additional layers of interviews with them? They're willing, they'll meet with you, you know, pretty quickly, I'm sure, but then...
Takes time.
Yeah, and that was not what I was proposing or saying at all. I was just saying that the process so far has been very thorough, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a complete picture of everything that had happened and to give folks in town confidence that this was a good process and we came to a good recommendation. And that was my point that I was trying to make.
I will tell you that from talking to a number of different towns in this, it's not unusual for one or two people in a town to do the interviewing, whether it be the, there's an existing energy sustainability committee or a town manager or somebody else, a sustainability director, who does the initial cut and then makes a recommendation. So, this is pretty much a, it's not an atypical model for this, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But again, you know, it's just a recommendation. You guys get to do what you want to do with it.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think West Springfield and Springfield are also kind of further along in this process. I know that there are some articles that have come out recently about their municipal aggregation plans. And to just give folks an idea, I think some of the numbers that I was seeing was that this is going to save folks 8% to 10% on their energy bills. And that's, you know, very significant. And obviously, neighbors of ours, so that's something that people can kind of look at to get an idea of the impact this will have on their bills.
Mark?
Josh, I'd like to make a motion that the select board direct the town manager to enter into a municipal aggregation agreement with Good Energy for the purposes of completing a municipal aggregation contract.
Second?
All right, any further discussion?
I just had one quick question. So, for the consultants, how long are they actually consulting and, you know, on board with the town? Is it for years or just at the start or...
Forever.
Okay.
Through this contract, and remember, I said, if a resident gets a question about their bill, the 800 number is to the consultant to talk to it. And then, you know, let's say we have a three-year contract. And I think they did say, they used to go five years, but I don't know if they do that anymore. But at the end of two years or two, they'll come back and they'll say, you know, "It's time to renew." Because remember, when the contract ends, they're gone and somebody else is up. So, it's to their benefit to renew. So, it's like they're your partner until the town decides they're not your partner anymore.
And again, this isn't a one-time cost, right? This is part of the, out of the bill, what we're generating, is that right?
Yeah, it's, I guess it comes out of each resident, but it's the same amount no matter who you pick. And it's that .01 cent per kilowatt hour that just gets it. So, in other words, if they negotiate a price of, you know, 17.3 cents, or 17.35, what shows up is 17.351 as your cost for your electricity.
But, so, we can get, if things were not going the way we expected, we can get out of it, it's...
Not until the contract is up.
And, but the contract, you said it's forever, but it's...
No, no.
It's three years.
It's a three-year contract, right.
And then, at the end of that, could we switch consultants if we wanted?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that we're not paying a consultant out of the gate $100,000 and then moving forward, we're still paying. It's part of, gotcha.
Yeah, I, by the way, I think most of the contract language is pretty standard in terms of, I assume town council would be...
The state establishes the municipal aggregation contract.
But again, there are models from the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Energy Resources for this type of thing. What I can tell...
So, just a, Dan, to finish or answer you, the next question is, so if we vote to accept this, the next step was Lynn would enter into that contract, sign the contract. That municipal aggregator would then schedule public hearings in Long Meadow to get a sense of, you know, they indicated there's this base level and there's probably 100% renewable. But what's the middle level? What do people want? Do they want, you know, 40% renewable or 60, whatever? And how many people are going to take it? And how do we have to talk to people and how do we communicate? So, they would arrange these public hearings to talk about this and while they're developing and looking at pricing and things like that of these things. And following that, then, they would then say, "Okay, every resident in town, here's your three choices, if we choose three, most of them recommend three. And here's the pricing on those three choices. You know, we will opt in, we'll have a requirement here because it's, and you could, but you can opt into the higher choices or you could opt out altogether." So, the next steps really fall to the municipal aggregator, not to the town manager or to Corinne or anybody else, or even the Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Everyone good? All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Nice work. Wish I could get those smaller bills, but...
You know, you have a negative bill.
I'll take some credits.
No, I've learned from this town not to trade in credits. All right, moving on to new business. We have, reviewing our fiscal year 2025 with the fire department.
Hello again.
Hello, nice to see you.
Just, everybody knows Deputy Chief Rigby, the other John in the fire department. Documents in front of you tonight. First will be the EMS rate change. Everybody's been through this process before. So, John has done most of the work on this. My name's on it, so I'll be right here. But if you have any questions on it, or if you want me to do, have John do a brief review on it.
I think it's always helpful. People are watching, want to hear, so if you could do a brief review, that'd be great.
Yep, absolutely. So, every year, we do kind of an analysis of our EMS rates, not only statewide, but part of the region. And that's on page four or five. We take a look at our basic life support rate, advanced life support rate, I should say, advanced life support one rate, and our advanced life support two rate, and then our loaded mileage rate. We compare them to our Western Mass averages, the state averages, and we also look at the Medicare rates as well. And then, we look at how it, we're able to sustain our services. And in that, we looked at how we were doing and what we expected for an increase in the amount of call volume. Right now, we're looking, we're seeing probably a 10% increase in EMS call volume coming up in fiscal year 25. That's based on what we're seeing in 24. We did see a dip in call volume over COVID and the year after that. We expected before COVID, we expected to go back to the call volume before COVID, and we're seeing, we're seeing an increase now. So, in order to sustain emergency medical services, we're recommending a 3% raise in all of our rates, BLS, ALS-1, 2, and the mileage rate. This will allow us to sustain the services we have now, you know, moving forward.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mark.
It's kind of a sarcastic question, but nobody ever calls up and says, "I need an ambulance, but before I call you, you know, what are your rates, right?" I mean...
Well... You'd think that'd be funny, but it's, we do get quite a few questions on it. So, Andrea, our administrative assistant in the department takes all those calls. People that question our rates, normally, it's a good conversation because they, on occasion, they'll utilize a private service. And they want to know why we were so, if we missed something. Because private services are roughly 35% more expensive than what we charge. So, and they also go, they're very, I don't want to term this correctly, aggressive at collecting Medicare copays. We are honestly not. If people have supplemental insurance, we obviously collect that. But if somebody owes us 50 bucks on a copay, I don't send, we don't send them the collections on that. So, so that's the questions we get mainly on the rates. But typically, when they call 911, they're not looking for an estimate. It's happened though, I will tell you, Mark.
We will get a question every once in a while from a patient. If we're in the field, they'll say, "Well, how much is this going to cost?" I can tell you that that's not ever something that we tell our people to, to have them, have the residents worry about. We will tell them, you know, "Let's worry about the emergency now. We can talk about that later if, you know, it becomes an issue." And, you know, I've been, I've been involved with the service quite a long time, as the chief has, and I've, we've had people come in and ask questions about the bills and express their concerns. And I think 99.9% of the time, we send them home happy and say that, you know, "If you can't, if you can't pay your bill or whatever, let's talk about it and let's figure out a way that, you know, we can either help you out with it or put you on a payment plan." Or oftentimes, it's they don't realize they have secondary insurance and it wasn't applied to secondary insurance, so...
Yeah, Andrea will actually walk them through a lot of the insurance processes. We get a lot of people are very confused by their insurance and what's mixed in with their emergency room bill and things like that. Andrea knows this stuff way better than any one of us do. With our billing company, Social, I can tell you a case we just finished last week. Person had used ambulance twice, they owed us about $4,000. And they were, they had actually sent in the paperwork to set up a payment plan. And we looked at them like, "You're insured." And we, Andrea, you've actually called their insurance company, people like, "Yeah." They never submitted it, so...
I have a very odd question. So, I was looking at the capitalist, and I was reading the Washington Post a couple days ago, and there was a volunteer fire department, I think in Virginia, that got scammed. You saw this article?
I didn't.
They got, they thought they were putting in down payment for a fire depart, or fire, no, I'm sorry, an ambulance, because they're hard to get. They thought they found one across the country. They wired 220 grand out and it's gone. They got, I think they maybe got 50 or 100 back, but a lot of it was just, was gone.
So, we get this guy named Chad?
That was my question. Not that I don't trust the department, but there's, you got money coming in, collecting, but you're not, this capital money's not going out through you, that's not...
Oh, no. No, damn, not give me a checkbook yet. It aren't likely to be.
I read that article, my eyes bugged out.
We can see what...
We can see what's in the account, but I can tell you that either Chad nor Ian would, would give us the.
Yeah, to that point, a lot of these smaller, they're associations and they're, they're volunteer groups, and they either operate off donations or maybe they collect insurance. And, you know, it's probably a volunteer.
It was volunteer.
You know, treasure, you know, like for VFW or something like that, and, you know, it's unfortunate. There are a lot of scams out there, I will tell you.
Yeah, I see them every day, yeah, so, absolutely. But, Mark.
Just a question, I don't know if it's chief or deputy chief, when you set the rates, and, you know, one of the columns you have here is Western Massachusetts, what's our or your philosophy on, should we be in the top twenty percent or the bottom twenty percent, or we compare ourselves to a certain town or not? I mean, do you look at that since you've got those numbers here?
So we, we look at the averages and actually, and so Ian, Deputy, I, and I've done this for all the years with Paul, one of the part, the big part of this process is we do the costing, what's it really costs to operate each year? So break down every aspect of the fire department, we unco-mingle, I don't know if that's the right term, the fire department say, okay, if we were to get rid of the ambulance, we take it backwards, get rid of the ambulance service, but you still want an ISO three fire department, what's it going to cost? And then that's what we, so we look at that pricing, you know, and then what do we need to make? And then we compare our rates and say, okay, we need to have rates that are going to cover our costs and be defendable. So if somebody says, you know, East Long Meadow is charging, you know, ten bucks a ride, you're, you're charging twenty, what's up? So we just make sure we don't get a lot, we haven't yet to the point where we've cost the, you know, we're going to be way above the average. So we are in the top though, we're, we're normally the highest every single year, so.
And this, the other question I have is, I go back however many years before we had a, an in-town ambulance service, and you recall, it was, I think Philip Laurel or some, one of the, a child in town who's.
Fagan.
Oh, Fagan, right, right. Who wanted to start, I mean, do, do you folks, I'm not going to say look at that, but how does that impact what the fire, fire department and our EMT services do in terms of the initial objective or goal or the, you know, the reason that, you know, that we have our own ambulance service?
So, and if somebody had a chance, if you had a chance to read my monthly report this month, I actually outlined a call that we did. And I think that, that call, I wrote about that pacing call, we received a call the other day. Our folks are really part of the fabric of the community, and they, they've always maintained that all the way from the, you know, the Neil Fagan story was the motivation to start with it. And, you know, I was, I'm probably the only one that was even remotely close to that one, but the, the relationships they have with people in the community continues. And I think that's a, that's a big motivator for our folks. It's, they're part of the fabric of the community. I love the fact that we have more people moving to town now or, you know, where they're coaching with you, but they, they could be going to your, your, your house for the, with the ambulance. You know, they, they know the parents of families, they know where keys are located in somebody's house. You know, we, we take some people through some very difficult times in their, in their lives, so, and they do it with care, charisma, and they're highly technically skilled. In the, in the, in my report, I wrote about a very technical call where they use some very advanced techniques, external pacing, which is, where we can do it wherever, it's a skill that we've chosen to adopt, absolutely save the person's life. But the one thing that the people could remember about the call, they didn't care that we gave them medications and did all this high-tech stuff. Two hours later, our ambulance is back in the hospital, one of our paramedics went into their room just to see how they were doing, and got them some water, you know, a glass of water. And that's, that's what they remember. And that's, that's what we built our service around, so I hope I answered your questions.
Yeah, one of the things that I can, and I've been only off the line per se for about a year now, taking over as deputy chief, is we have constantly, constantly pushed our folks that we need to treat everybody like their family. And that was one of the things that was instilled in me when I started here, you know, when I, when I worked for Chief Dearborn, and we instill it today, that regardless of that person's emergency, it's something that they wanted to, or felt they needed to call us, so we're going to take care of their emergency. And, you know, we talk about it all the time in the initial training with, with, with our, our newer folks, that forget everything you may have learned at another community or whatever else, but here in Long Meadow, the way we treat our, our folks that were at their house for their emergency is like their family. And, and there's no ands or buts about it. And, and it shows, it shows in the people that are out there in the community every single day, that we constantly get letters and we get people call and thank you and get people to stop us in the grocery store and say, thank you for, you know, I know you weren't at the call, but your people did this and.
They drop off a lot of cookies, which I'm a big fan of.
Which that shows too, unfortunately.
Not on you. You still work for me. Thank you.
We have a motion to adopt the.
So now move we adopt the fiscal 2025 cost recovery proposal.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? Thank you.
That was, you meant ambulance rates?
Ambulance rates, yes.
I got that.
Yeah.
Moving on to emergency services cost recovery rates.
Yep, so this is something that we don't use a lot. It's the case that we have a third party that's responsible for an incident. Most of the time when this is employed, it's down Route 91 in relation to like an oil spill from a tractor trailer accident, but we have used it in town for various things. So under a certain section of general law, we can bill for our services, mainly hazardous materials. We can't do it every day, but when we can, we do. And we've collected some big money over the years on this. If you recall, when there was the tanker accident down at exit forty-nine, we were part of a mutual aid assignment there for three days, and we billed out, I think it was seventeen thousand dollars, covered all of our expenses. So, wait, those go back into the Ian's fund, I mean, the general fund. But this is actually, it'll be used for, used for actually any town department, but primarily police, fire, and DPW.
Has this changed from last year?
We, it, it is modified a little bit. There's a few things that we increased the price on, so. Not, not a lot, though.
How do you establish these, these costs?
So some of it's based, so the fire and the police are based on the FEMA rates, and then we, and then we put in our contractual, all the things to cover collective bargaining agreements, and DPW gets them from the DPW Association from Massachusetts.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, we, we approve the emergency services cost recovery rates for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Further? All those in favor? All right. Thank you both for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me stay for B.
Oh, sure. Sorry to kick you out.
No, it's fine.
Yes, sir, I will leave.
All right, next up, we have the local nineteen oh three collective bargaining agreement for 2024 to 2027. This is discuss an executive session, do we have a motion to accept the, or enter into the agreement?
I'll make a motion, we enter into agreement with local nineteen oh three for the fiscal years 2024 through 2020, or actually calendar years, 2024 through 2027 for labor contract.
Second.
Anything further?
Yeah, I, I just think that, that because this is an open session, people at home deserve, Lynn, to kind of go through any of the highlights of the, of the contract proposal that we all went through in, in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Yeah, just so, it's, it's apparent that we've spent a lot of time on this. This isn't just the first time it's come to you. I think this is actually the third time this, this collective bargaining agreement that we've brought this to you with, for feedback and as we've been in negotiations. So their biggest change to this contract is the adjustment to the pay scales. We've actually completely thrown out the old pay scales and revamped them for new pay scales. We spent a lot of time looking at our comparable communities to make sure that we were competitive, especially over the last contract, we saw quite a few people leave us that had been very highly trained. So a lot of money walks out the door when they leave. So we took a lot of time to make sure that we got that right. There were also quite a few updates just to have the contract reflect current practice in the department. And one of the big things that we were really happy to see happen here is the adoption of the personnel policy manual when the contract is silent. And then there was also a change to remove the sick leave buyback. And so that's also something that we've been working on, trying to get out of contracts. It can be a nightmare to try to administer payroll wise. And am I missing anything that you wanted to touch on, Chief?
Just some improvements to the educational benefits. We included paramedic training as an incentive to hopefully draw people, and then just a lot of language cleanup, so that was expired, so.
And just, I think since Lynn has been here as town manager and since I've been on the board, there's been a lot, a market effort to pay people in town what they're worth. And I, I think that that is a really laudable goal. People want good services, they want, they want to hear, they want fired, firefighters and EMS who are part of the community and want to be here and want to stay. And, and we did it with, we have a DPW wage study, we raised rates for all of our town staff, and I, I think that that is incredibly important, and I'm glad that we do it, because we have to show our appreciation, and it's just, it makes fiscal sense too, because every time you start over with an employee, you lose a lot of knowledge, as Lynn said, and we have to stop that. And I'm, I'm really glad we're doing this, I'm glad that it's going to make a difference in our firefighters' lives, that they can stay here and, and be part of the community. And I just want to thank everyone for their hard work and getting to this point. Mark?
Yeah, I, I want to just take note of one of the things Lynn said, and that was that as part of the total review of salaries and wages, we've done a total revamp of the wage scale. I think people at home are looking for us to say, oh, it's a two percent, two percent, two percent over three, but this doesn't, doesn't fall into those categories at all. And it's not to say it's a thirty percent increase across the annual either, but the, the adjustments really can't compare one year to the next, and I think that's important for people at home to, to hear that, that, that it's a, it's consistent with the directive that the town manager got from the select board, it's consistent with the budget that we passed, and I think people, as Josh said, it's consistent with paying our employees fair, fair wages for, for what they do.
Mark.
Yeah. Certainly agree with what Josh well said, Mark as well. You know, this was, I think, the first, you know, contract, certainly for fire, that, that I came across being on, a couple of years on the board now, and, you know, I hate to keep saying this, but this is like one of the, you look at the, the contracts that we've had for, in place for twenty years, and, you know, Mark just mentioned something like, you know, the rate looks like it's much higher, but this is something that we've kicked the can down the road for fifteen plus years, just like if it's trees, if it's water sewer, deferred maintenance, and now everything's piling up. So I think moving forward, we need to be cognizant of the fact that things cost more money, things are expensive, but we need to take care of our, our workers in town and they take care of us. And the gaps that I saw from fifteen plus years is, is pretty incredible. So I think this shows that the board has a commitment to doing the right thing, just like the men and women who put on a uniform every day to serve the town. So I just want to thank everyone's efforts for the contract and all the firefighters, men and women who helped protect us.
Oh, yeah, sorry, just to underscore a couple of points, I think, I think Dan is right when he says that, though, if you look at just rates and say that they're increasing ten or thirty percent, it might look like a lot, but in fact, it's bringing a lot of these positions kind of at the same level as surrounding areas now. And so I think that's important for folks to know. And then to underscore what Josh said too about this making financial sense by paying folks less than what folks in the communities around us have been getting, you know, we have been losing folks, and it really costs money to hire new people, to train them, and there's a lot of cost to that turnover, which we are also hoping to avoid now by raising wages. So well said by everyone, but I just want to underscore those couple of points.
All right, nothing further, we're going to vote?
Josh, I just, I just want to sincerely thank the board. This has been monumental for the department. We feel this will stabilize our workforce, which has been a giant challenge for us. I want to thank Lynn for her work in the local. Our, our bargaining sessions were super productive. It was absolute pleasure, you know, it, you know, there was, there's no yelling, and there's no, like you see, you know, the old time TV shows, you know, it was very productive, constructive. The local has the same goals as, as the town does, is to retain employees, have a good workable document that we can continue to move the fire department forward with, and I believe, I absolutely believe this is going to go a long ways. I think somebody probably heard feedback from some of our members, it's greatly appreciated, so thank you so much.
All right, all those in favor?
I was going to wait till they voted to thank them.
I just wanted to close the deal.
But seriously, thank you. You're a huge part in this as well, and we all put a lot of effort in, but it ultimately comes down to you guys to vote for it, so thank you for that.
Nice work, everyone.
Have a great evening.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, discussion on town in Long Meadow retirement plan. Mark, you wanted to add this to the agenda, so if you want to.
Sure, I'll just kick it off. I think, you know, this has come up over and over again, and, and I think that it's worth having our CFO certainly, but our town, take a look at what it would take, how long it would take, if you can even do it, you know, what the benefits or what the detriments might be to the town to look at separating the town from the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, whether you'd go, we're pulling everybody out, or, you know, it's the, anybody, any new hires starting now, or however it goes, I think, you know, it, it's going to take a while to figure it out. It'd be great if we worked on it and had a decision sometime so that we would know where we want to do with our, the next fiscal year. Clearly, nothing we're going to do, but I think it's, it's worth having the discussion because the, it's a, it's a, it's a line item cost that's going up eight percent every year, which is the maximum allowed by law, and it's projected to go up eight percent every year for a long, long time, and, and that's one of our highest costs. So I'd love to see what Ian may have looked at, because I know he, he made some phone calls.
Mark, you're our frontline guy on this, and I appreciate your reports back and everything we hear. I'm very curious about this, and if you look at the budget, it's a massive amount of money we spend on this, and eight percent outpaces inflation, outpaces everything. There's no way we can, we can do that in perpetuity, so, but if, if the other ones are also, even if it's seven and a half percent, another goes up, that's significant. So I'm, I, I know you've, you've got a lot on your plate already, you have, you're still pretty new on the job, but to the extent you can take this on, I, I think, I'm, I'm very curious, and I think it's a good idea.
Well, I can at least comment as to what I've done so far, if that's helpful. So, you know, the discussion was first made to me around December when we were doing the initial budget discussions, I think Mark brought it up to me to start researching or seeing if this is even possible. So I had some preliminary conversations with Lynn about kind of the direction that we wanted to go with this. So one of the first things that I did is reached out to surrounding communities of like size to see what they did in terms of communities that self-administered, and the first community I spoke to was West Springfield, they're about the same size population wise, they're a little bigger, but in terms of comparable population, I thought it would be accurate. So I wrote, I reached out to James Lovati, who is the retirement administrator of the town. This was back in January, I had about, almost a two and a half hour phone call with him going over a lot of different things involved. a lot of different things involved with how they self-administer their plan. And I don't yet have a write-up because there's a lot of notes that were taken. But to give a highlight, or give a high-level briefing of what we discussed, we went over the costs involved of how the town administers their plan. So, there are two employees plus benefits that manage the retirement plan for the town side. Uh, the CFO has to be on a board. The board represents the retirement system. So, there's the mayor, CFO, and then two elected officials that represent the community's retirement system. Uh, there is one non-retiree member of the system, so five in total. They have to have an attorney to represent to make sure that the system itself is being properly maintained. This is something that is billed for hours. Um, they have a $50 million fiduciary insurance policy. This covers both employees and the investment managers that administer the plan. So, when I say that the town administers their own plan, they also have a, um, third party that they work with. So, they buy into a group that works on the administrative side of it, while the town does the payroll, the benefits, the administering for the locality. So, that, that is something that they introduced me to the company that they use, so I have a contact there if we want to pursue this further. Um, we talked briefly about the software that the organization uses because that is its own cost, and there's the time it takes to both learn the software and the annual maintenance costs involved. Uh, there is a two-year actuarial study that's required that ranges from $10,000 to $15,000 a year. I don't want to start going into cost now because it's very arbitrary at this point, so I just want to give up a summary of what we discussed. Every three to four years, uh, they are required to have an audit of the plan because they self-administer, and that's covered through PARAC, which is the organization that oversees the state of Massachusetts, as well as the federal level. So, in terms of what I thought were the best takeaways from the discussion is it is a large undertaking for the town to self-administer, not that it's impossible, but what they have found is the, the people in their positions have been there for 10 to 12 years. So, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that is kept. So, that is something that if we were on it to self-administer, we would have to look for someone who has the experience necessary in order to run the plan. So, that might take some time and/or be an expense in order to bring them in. Now, what I, what I thought would be best in this case would be to reach out to, one, our audit partner to see if Markham does any type of study to determine what the cost would be in order to exit the plan. I reached out to Tanya Campbell, and unfortunately, no one at Markham provided those services, but she gave me a contact, uh, Jamie Worrell from Strategic Retirement Partners that has experience with this. So, I reached out to him, and I'm waiting to hear back from him. I also had a discussion with Erica Dixon, our HR director, to see if she had any contacts. And without going any further, I think Lynn and I had a discussion, I think, last week where I guess what would help me is if the board wanted to give a directive as to how far I wanted to take this progress. So, what I'm looking for is, are we looking at this point to get a quote for a study to be done? Or how far along do you want this process to go?
Yeah, Ian, I appreciate that. I think the, the issue of how to administer your own plan, I think, is, like you found out, got all its own issues. For me, the bigger, the bigger and potential more concerning is how do you withdraw from a plan you're already in? And, you know, I would personally like to see that, to understand what that would entail before we even go to say what would it take to create your own plan? Because you can't create a plan unless you're prepared to do what it takes to withdraw from the, the plan you're on. But again, when I, when I initially brought this up, my goal would be to come to some a sufficient understanding to set a direction that, that would target a fiscal year 2026 decision. So, it's really, I don't know what the timing is, but, you know, fiscal 2026 is July 1st, 2025. So, we've got, you know, for 13, 14 months to, to see what it takes. But again, focus on can you disengage from Hampton County? And if you can, what is it, you know, if, if you got to pay them $200 million to disengage, it's going to kind of sway where we're headed here, so.
And I did, at, at an effort to understand better the agreement that we had with Hampton County, I asked Paul if we had a copy of an agreement, and he said that there was no written agreement made. This was something that, we accepted the statute for a contributory retirement system sometime back in the 60s, and he didn't even know the date. So, this is something that we've had longstanding, and it would be something that we would need to do a study for to understand.
Sometime between 1937 and 1955. It was like, I did some research today. We didn't get to talk.
If it's pre-Paul, it's already old.
Wow.
I, I agree with Mark, that we should figure out first what withdrawing looks like, because that's a deal breaker.
So, so what I take from that is we need to do some sort of study to determine what the exit looks like, what terms of cost, in terms of timeline. That's, that's how I interpret that.
Yeah, that's my, yeah.
Yeah, it may be, um, maybe less, um, than a study. It could be a first step with, um, town council or someone at PARAC potentially to find out what are the logistics of this anyway, and then start drilling down. But I do think at some point, we would need a study.
Yeah, to choose what the next step, but yeah, we have to get to that step first, or not get there, but decide if we even want to go there, yeah.
Is this something like regionalization that we could possibly do with other towns? I mean, obviously, they're under the Hampton, I mean, I get that, but, but there has to be in some of these meetings, Mark, that they're like.
I can, I can tell you the town of Hampton would, would do it, isn't it?
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, maybe, maybe we could do some sort of regionalization of this. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the study's going to find or say, but.
It would be pretty funny to have, not that Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. But yeah, I, I think that that, that's not a study, that's a question, I guess, to also that other consultant you are waiting to hear an answer from.
So, I actually have an additional, I actually forgot about this, but since we were talking about PARAC. Um, back in December, I reached out to PARAC for this specific question. So, if I can, I'm going to read you what I asked and their response. So, my question was, "Has any town or city removed themselves from a multi-employer defined benefit plan before? If so, what is the process involved for this? Once removed from the plan, what are the next steps?" So, this is what they sent me. This is an opinion letter that they sent to another municipality. They redacted the name, so I don't know who it was for, but. So, "Dear Blank, this is in response to your email to PARAC on April 29th, 2021, regarding whether it is permissible for a town to opt out of a regional retirement system. Specifically, you state, 'I was wondering generally if it is permissible for a town to opt out of a regional retirement economy system and create its own retirement system where the retirement administrative benefits, as outlined in Mass General, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter 32, would be managed internally by the town. Do you know if this is possible and where the statutory, statutory authority for such actions would be derived? Acceptance of Chapter 32 occurs pursuant to Section 28 of said chapter, which dictates whether a town establishes their own system or joins a regional or county system. There is no mechanism in Chapter 32 which permits a member unit to leave a regional or county retirement system once they've accepted the provisions of Chapter 32 and join said system. The only way in which, the only way in which such an action could take place would be with special legislation. We are unaware of any instance in which a member unit has ever received legislative approval to dissolve their association with a regional or county retirement system and then establish their own independent retirement system. In 2014, the town of Athol received legislative approval to dissolve their retirement system and join the Worcester Regional Retirement System, but we have never seen the reverse. Chapter 360 of the Acts of 2014 provided for the dissolution of the Athol Retirement System."
Well, if we need one legislative bit of help, uh, this probably would be the one I would choose, but, uh, that's, that's interesting.
So, hopefully, that gives some additional context.
It's a lot of context.
Seems like a pretty uphill battle.
Yeah.
Well, at least we have the first answer.
So, is it possible, maybe?
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay. Well, I, I'd still talk to, you know, can't hurt to ask around.
Yeah.
But that's not a great, uh, that's a tough answer.
It's also, I mean, something to think about. We could put forward special legislation if we really want to continue to explore this.
Uh, that's, I, I'd rather, if we, if we didn't have one, uh, gunner or bowling ball chamber, I'd rather prop two and a half. Uh, I, like, I don't know, we can't get any headway on that. I can't imagine, or have to vote on it. But I know that would be tough from what I hear. This is probably, it'd get even harder to get attention on.
Yeah, I mean, this is a long shot, but there may be other communities who would.
Yeah, that's true.
Join Long Meadow in doing this, too. So, I, you know, that, that's, thank you, Ian, that helps understand.
I knew, I knew I reached out to them. I just couldn't remember when. I just, I happened to find it.
So, that's a pretty pinpoint answer. That's good. It's never been done. Yeah.
It probably can't be.
But, but I, that's a good point. If you have, if there's 10 towns, then maybe. It's, that's a lot more, uh, reps and senators on board, at least. Anything else on there right now?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ian, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have the Town Manager Annual Evaluation Process. I think we've all done this now? But you did it with like a month of experience?
Yeah.
It's a pretty lengthy evaluation of Lynn for the one month.
Yeah. So, uh, this is from Mike. Says that we should submit our fiscal year 24 Town Manager Evaluation Forms by Thursday, May 30th. Uh, evaluations are compiled, posted on the agenda, and PDF fillable version will be shared with the board, along with updated goals, an updated goal spreadsheet. Have we gotten that, Lynn?
Yeah, Mike sent it.
Um, I have, I may have to share an updated copy with the.
I don't think I saw the goals. I might have.
I know, we've been working on it, but I don't think we've.
Yeah, we haven't updated the.
Sent it back out.
Google sheet, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we've all done this process before, and, uh, for anyone watching who is not aware, we, uh, we all do our own evaluation and give scores to Lynn, and then, um, Mike compiles it. We got one document, and then, um, she faces the firing squad at the, at her next meeting. Or not. Anything else? Any questions on that? You have more experience on this one than anything. Find, find more nice things to say. We're setting the, and June 11th, 2024 Annual Town Election Warrant?
Um, we said June, uh, we approved the June 11th, 2024 Town Election Warrant as included in our packet.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, then we have Street Closure Applications. Uh, first move on for First Church of Christ Long Meadow Event, May 29th, from 9:00 to noon, Long Meadow Street, East of the Green. Mike, these were all approved by, uh, LPD, correct?
All right, um, I moved to approve the First Church of Christ Long Meadows Street Closure Application for Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to noon.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? Center School Field Day, Friday, May 31st, the rain date of Monday, June 3rd, Long Meadow Street, East of the Green, between Longfellow and Colton, from 8:45 to 2:00 PM.
So moved.
Oh, I, yeah, all right, yes. I moved that we, or I, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? And, uh, I want to entertain a motion for a Captain Road Block Party Request for Friday, June 14th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I'd close Captain Road between Williams and Caravelle.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Uh, finally, we have, uh, two one-day liquor licenses from LACCF for June 6th and June 27th, 2024. Uh, Mike, are these all in? We have everything we need for these?
Yeah, insurance is on file, check is received, and then, uh, tip certification is renewed, actually, as of recent.
Okay. Uh, I, I want to entertain a motion to accept the, uh, June 6th and June 27th, 2024 LACCF One-Day Liquor License Applications for the, at the Long Meadow Adult Center.
What did you say, June 6th and what?
Uh, June 27th.
Okay, I thought you said something wrong. Okay. Thank you.
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, anything further? All those in favor? All opposed? All right, uh, do we have anything on correspondence? Mike, was, uh, the, somebody spoke with, uh, Mr. Summers about the tree hearing process?
Correct, yes. Uh, I believe our tree warden did, and actually the town manager as well.
Yeah, so if anybody is curious, the, the times that are posted for the tree hearings, that is when they're going to happen. But the hearing, I'm sorry, the, the, the tree hearings by the warden, but if they are appealed, then they come to us, and, uh, that would be, uh, not during the day. So, a little more flexible, at least.
And I just want to also clarify that you can make a, uh, opposition, uh, to a tree via writing as well.
Right. As we found out, any one person can, can do that.
Do we know that the residents are getting letters sent to their, their home as well? Because I mean, obviously, the tree is wrapped with a letter, but are they also receiving a letter, do we know?
It comes down to what's required in, in Mass General Law for the hearings.
It's in the reminder.
Yeah. You have to post it in, in the paper, circulated, uh, seven days, uh, 14 days consecutively on, uh, two additionally. If it's a Thursday, you know, 14 days prior.
I don't know, is it also on the website?
It's on the website. It's posted as on, on our calendar for meeting agendas. Um, so, yeah.
So, I, it was in, I, uh, it's one of my great shames, but I read the legal section of the reminder. It was in there twice, yeah. All right, anything further on correspondence? Who wants the honors?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, good night. Thank you.